I'd like to call this meeting of the City Council to order or to ask you to stand for the invocation and the pledge if you're able and inclined. Dear God, we meet tonight with many things on our minds and on our hearts. The reality of instances of the unnecessary and tragic use of force by police has been brought vividly to us. We wonder how these things can happen. I think it's safe to say we certainly don't understand why they happen. We pray that we can move rapidly toward peace, understanding, and respect for all people. Please, dear God, eliminate the prejudice in our hearts and help us to know one another as individuals. We ask that to happen first and foremost. We ask you to help us respect our neighbors as they exercise their right of assembly and freedom of expression during their march up Georgia Avenue on Saturday. Foremost in our hearts is a request to keep them, our public safety officers and property, safe from harm. Tonight and certainly in the days ahead, we ask that you give us wisdom, patience, understanding, and that we get to know our neighbor. That's, I think that's so important and truly a first step. And so tonight and in the days ahead, give us wisdom and patience, certainly today, tomorrow, and certainly every day. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let the roll show that all council members are present tonight. Council, you've been provided the regular and study session meeting minutes of June 1st, 2020. If there are no corrections, additions, they'll stand approved as provided. Okay, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, this is our first in-person meeting after several, I think it was three, virtual council meetings. The governor has again extended the state of emergency in South Carolina. So perhaps we are a little premature in meeting tonight here in council chambers. But I think with the urgency and importance of items on our agenda tonight, or certainly one item on our agenda tonight, I think it's appropriate that we be here. As you may or may not know, we became aware late today that a member of our city staff has tested positive for COVID-19 virus. We certainly give our best wishes for a speedy recovery to that individual. And tonight, as you noticed, and I appreciate it as I'm looking out, we've encouraged social distancing and the wearing of masks because it's important for all of us to limit the spread of this disease. This room tonight with social distancing would have been 42 people at one time, and it looks like we're well within that number, so we don't need to take any additional steps at this time. And I apologize for what may seem to be a little disjointedness in the meeting, but we reacted very quickly this afternoon to try and have this meeting in a way that would not allow us or cause us to be permitted to expose to the virus. You know, we're all concerned, and I'm happy to see many masks tonight. That's very important. And from my own understanding of this, it's not time in our nation to say everything's all right. We need to continue to practice and follow the guidelines of CDC and certainly South Carolina DHEC. I have, we today thought maybe of having the meeting virtual at the last minute, but that certainly would not have enabled those of you here to make comments or remarks because it was this afternoon. So we're having it this way. If you haven't already, there are speaker forms on the table here. There's a number of pens there. If you speak and want to fill out the form, use one of the pens and please just take the pen with you. We ask you, if you do choose to make a comment tonight, there's disinfectant wipes there. Take one with you if you want to wipe the microphone before you speak and after you speak. And there's a little black trash can there to dispose of it. I think that would be appropriate for each of us. And that covers my introductory remarks, I think, and I ask your forbearance because we are certainly in in terrain we've not traveled before. So consider that, and we're doing our best to give each of you an opportunity, obviously, to make comments at the appropriate time. Now, having said that, as we get into the business of this evening, I would like to make a motion that all items on tonight's agenda that was published on Friday be tabled into the next meeting with the exception of item number seven, which is Resolution 2020-23 to authorize the issuing of a permit to Brandy Mitchell for a marching protest on Georgia Avenue in demonstration at Calhoun Park on June 20th, 2020. Do I have a second to this motion?
One second.
Is that you, Mr. McGee? As you remember, this motion to table is not debatable. So since we're all present tonight, we can show our vote by a show of hands. All in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Just as an additional word of comment to you, sorry, comment tonight, the city clerk and most of our directors have been excused from the meeting, and our city clerk is taking minutes. minutes remotely from the live stream. So that is being taken care of. Okay, moving on now to item number seven, Resolution Number 2020-23 to authorize the issuing of a permit to Brandy Mitchell for a marching protest on Georgia Avenue and demonstration at Calhoun Park on June 20th, 2020. The chair moves to approve this resolution. Do I have a second?
Okay.
It's unanimous. Let me pick Mr. Tool. Okay, before we get into the discussion, Mr. Zier, would you like to, I know you have some comment that you would like to make for clarification for citizens as well as council?
Yes, sir. I appreciate it, Mr. Mayor. In reviewing our city ordinance, which requires this procedure for granting a parade permit, and I would say over the last 10 years, we've used it regularly with the Christmas parade, and I don't think with much else. This ordinance dates back to 1970 at least, and I would have to tell you that from that date until today, there have been major changes, particularly in the federal law related with this type of matter, First Amendment rights and free speech. There are still rights that the city has to require that a permit be requested, particularly where there's going to be a need to close a street, close a public park, or something of that nature. And there are reasonable requirements that can be placed upon a permit such as this. But I think what I would advise you is the current status of the law is that when you are dealing with very definitely a free speech right, that there is a presumption that the party requesting that is entitled to it. The council would still have the right, based upon articulable circumstances, that would indicate a safety, public safety issue related to that, which would be such as conflicting requests for permits and parades at the same time between, with two different groups that maybe had different views. But generally, what I would advise you is that if, unless there is an articulable basis to deny the permit based upon public safety issues, that generally the courts require, it's not so much a discretionary issue anymore as to whether the council would like for an event to take place or not, but whether or not there's a true issue to the public safety. And I would tell you, over the years, we have granted permits with controversial-type issues, and I do not recall us denying that. Now, the one thing that I have advised council of earlier this week, that we have a 15-day requirement for a request, and obviously with a Christmas parade, with a Memorial Day parade, a Fourth of July parade, that certainly someone requesting a permit for that, wanting roadways closed and things, they should comply with that requirement, and it's reasonable for us to impose that. There have been federal cases over the past number of years that basically question time requirements, and specifically where you're dealing with what is, I guess, generally referred to as an immediate issue, an immediate concern, something that's in the general public's concern at the time. And in cases like that, there may be times that the 15-day requirement would not be enforceable. And of course, our ordinance at this point requires that council approve, and there would be many times that council would not be meeting, and that there may be a need for a permit to be approved other than by the council. And I think what I advised council and what I sent earlier this week, obviously, we need to work on this ordinance and bring it into compliance with current law. But I am also advising council that if there is another request that is not made in a manner that council would be able to meet and make a decision, but it appears to be timely in accordance with the current status of the law dealing with First Amendment rights, that it may be necessary that that permit be issued other than through the full council. Again, I think that maybe, you might have some questions about our ordinance itself, but I feel like that I needed to make sure that you were aware as to the current status of the law and what limitations that you have any ability to place upon the right of free speech.
Thank you. Excuse me, thank you. Okay, now is the time for remarks by those of you in the audience who choose to do so. I'd ask you to come one at a time. Again, if you'd like your name and a summary of your remarks included in the minutes of this meeting. There are white speaker forms on this desk to your right, my left. Pens there, if you would include your name and the topic, and you can leave them on that, on the desk when you're completed. If you choose not to, that's certainly your choice. I'd ask you, again, to take a disinfectant wipe. If you choose to wipe the mic before you start, that's your option, but certainly in the completion of your remarks, if you would wipe the microphone in consideration of those who may come after you. I'd ask you to limit your remarks to five minutes, as required by our ordinance. And in the interest of social distancing or just in protection of you and us, if somebody has made the point already, I would ask you to seriously consider allowing that statement of your point to be the discussion and the point on that topic. What I'm saying is, council probably doesn't necessarily need to hear the same point made four or five times. And that's just, and I don't want to say for expediency purposes, but certainly for personal health issues. So having said that, is there someone who would like to make a remark to council? If you'd raise your hand, I'll call on you. Ms. Mackey asked first, so come on down, Trina, and if you'd state your name so people can hear you and also the city clerk can hear you at her location, and if you want to fill out a speaker form, that's optional, so thank you very much. Or the disinfectant wipes would work too. Okay. I don't want you to short out the microphone. Ricky probably just did handstands in the back there, and Kelly's hair is curly.
My apologies. Good afternoon. Good evening. My name is Trina Mackey, 1970 Bunteen Drive, North Augusta. I really just want to read a statement that I prepared for council around race relations. I've stood in this place before to voice my concerns to you about race relations in North Augusta. I am compelled to stand before you again today to voice my concern again about race relations in North Augusta. I am glad that the council did approve the permit for the demonstration on the 20th. But on May 25th, 2020, three words in eight minutes and 46 seconds changed the world. It was on this day that George Perry Floyd was killed by a police officer who held his knee on Mr. Floyd's neck until he, while he was on the ground handcuffed, until he took his last breath. I don't know if any of you were able to watch that gut-wrenching video, but out of the ashes of that horrific death bore global support and solidarity around a movement in support of Black Lives Matter and against systemic racism, but you all have remained silent. To be clear, I do believe that all lives matter, and to be even clearer, all means all. There are two times that I can recall that the city of North Augusta made national news around race relations. The first time, and I'm dating myself, the first time was in September of 1989, when six local black leaders were barred from entering the Buffalo Room at the Seven Gables when the owner shouted, and these are his words, not mine, "Take your blank off my property. You can't come in here. You're not welcome here. I don't want blacks in here." The second incident was in February of 2014, when a North Augusta police officer left the North Augusta jurisdiction and chased 68-year-old Mr. Ernest Satterwhite to his home in Edgefield County, and shot and killed Mr. Satterwhite while he was still, in his driveway, while he was still seated in his car. As you are all well aware, North Augusta does not have single-member districts. Each one of you were elected in a, at-large election on a partisan basis, which means you represent each and every citizen of North Augusta. Now, your constituents may or may not have voted for you, but you were sworn in to represent all citizens of North Augusta. And again, I say, all simply means all. Yet, you remain silent. As your black constituent, I am left to decipher exactly what does your silence mean? And when I look at council and leadership in North Augusta, I don't see anyone who looks like me, which makes me feel as though someone who looks like me is not welcome in the city of North Augusta. In his infamous, in his infamous letter from Birmingham Jail, where he was jailed for organizing a peaceful economic withdrawal in Birmingham to fight racial injustice in the city, Reverend Martin Luther King Jr. thought his fellow white ministers, whom he considered men of goodwill and sincere concerns, would be his strongest allies. Instead, he was publicly condemned. "Disappointed," he remarked, and I quote, "They have been more cautious than courageous and have remained silent behind a nesticizing security of stained glass windows." I stand before you again today disappointed that each of my seven city representatives have remained silent on this issue. Your silence, council, is deafening. I do not expect you to make a political statement, but at the very least, I do expect at least a hint of empathy to your black constituents. I'm leaving for council along with my sheet and a copy of my statement. I'm leaving with you a copy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s letter from Birmingham Jail. My only request is that you read the letter, it's quite lengthy, it's nine pages, that you will read the letter and hopefully be prepared to have an open, honest, and hopefully uncomfortable conversation around race relations and injustice. And I would just close by saying, words are very powerful. The worst thing you can do today is to say nothing. Thank you very much for your time. And I'll make sure I wipe this down.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, council. First, I'd like to give acknowledgement of the yeses for the vote for the permit. I appreciate you.
I just want to be clear, we haven't taken that vote yet.
Sorry. I'm confused.
That's okay.
No worries.
Ms. Mackey also thought that, but we're procedurally getting to that point, and you're having an opportunity to make your remarks prior to the vote, so.
Okay, no problem. Well, I hope that you all will say yes, as it is my First Amendment right.
State your name.
Brandy Mitchell.
Thank you.
And I want to leave out the number of my address because of
That's fine.
Media. Lee Place Drive, North Augusta. Back to what I was saying, I hope that you will vote yes, as it is our First Amendment right to be able to protest and demonstrate in solidarity with George Floyd and his family, and also for the other victims of police brutality in around America. One of the first things I want to say is, there's a lot of conversation around who we are and why we are demonstrating. We have put together a group called Unify North Augusta. We are not an official chapter of Black Lives Matter, but we do stand in solidarity with the statement that black lives do matter. Our grassroots movement seeks to bring community and local leaders together to address key issues in the African-American community of North Augusta. This includes economic growth, service involvement, community violence, and public safety interaction. We do plan on putting feet to the ground. We're not just going to protest, but we are going to start voicing ourselves in the community. This includes town hall meetings, community meetings and events, and also service projects for the community. It is our plan to sit down with Chief Thomas. We already have a meeting with him on Tuesday, and we're going to be discussing with him about areas in our community that are underserved. This includes areas of high poverty and for neglected places in North Augusta. There has been a lot of talk about affiliations that we are connected with. We are not Antifa. I would like to say that again. We are not connected to any type of terrorist organization, and I will not repeat myself again when it comes to that. It's kind of been a rude thing. Also, there has been discussions around the monument. I want to make myself very clear, I am in favor of removing the monument completely. I did have an opportunity to talk with the mayor in the hallway, and we talked about things that they are planning on doing around the monument. I am in favor for, in favor of having a historical African-American district down where Carsville is, where the plaque is for the Hamburg massacre. I think that is a fantastic idea. I think that it would be a great idea for people to come and do field trips here, to come and learn about that area and reconstruction, and how African-Americans were thriving during that time. That is, that's fantastic. I think that is great. As far as the monument sits on top of the hill, as we all know, it forks in the road. You either go left or you go right, but one thing that you're going to see when you're going straight ahead is you're going to see that monument. And for myself, I know what is written on it is a declaration of white supremacy. I think that it has no business in our town whatsoever. I have a six-year-old daughter, and she is now just learning how to read. Every year, we sit at that park and we celebrate the birth of Jesus Christ together, and we look at lights, we roast marshmallows, we sing songs, we have a good time, and our kids dance and play around that monument. Think about that. Children running around a statue that is dedicated to white supremacy. What does that say to our children? What does that say to the black citizens of North Augusta? That is not a heritage monument. That monument, and I don't mean to be crass, is a middle finger to African-Americans in the North Augusta community. And if you allow that monument to stay up And if you allow that monument to stay up, what it says is that you are keeping the spirit alive of which it was erected, and I think it has no place in our community. It doesn't matter what you put around that monument as far as the teaching thing. What it says and the spirit that it embodies is that blacks are not welcome on this land. And what they did that day to those men and to those, and to those people that day was disgusting. It wasn't just, you know, "Hey, guys, we want you out of here." They slaughtered people. One man was shot in the back of the head. I just can't imagine why anybody would want that monument to stay right there. It's not a Confederate monument. It's not an ode to a time in history. When that thing was erected, they had one purpose and one purpose only, and that was to keep blacks in their place. And if the city of North Augusta continues to allow that monument to stand, what are you saying to the African-Americans in this community? I understand that you have put a committee together, but we are in a different time and a different place, and monuments all over the nation are being taken down because of the people who they represented. And that's what I have to say about that.
Could I ask you to kind of wind up your comments?
Yes, I am. My fourth thing was my question for public safety. What is public safety doing to reassure that a tragedy like George Floyd and Mr. Satterwhite does not occur in our city? And lastly, what will the city do to see more minority representation in our local government? I am aware that David McGee is a minority. He is a black man, but we need to see more representation on our council, and we will be talking about as a group if we need to start looking at districts for our council, because if people from different sides of the track can't be represented fully, then we need to be discussing that, and we'll also be doing that as a group. So I thank you for your time. My statements will be attached to the paper, and once again, I appreciate your vote.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. Let me, okay, sir, if you don't mind, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. I live at five fifty Sykes Avenue. My name is Louis Hutt. And shall I assume that Ms. Mitchell meant the Meriwether Monument? Okay, I read, I went up to the monument today and read what it said. I saw nothing white supremacist about it, okay? And if I'm not mistaken, wasn't Mr. Meriwether killed by white Democrats while fighting with the black militia? I believe he was. And if we tear down this monument, and I think we need to go over into Carsville and tear down that monument that is dedicated to the blacks, the black militia that was killed over there, that Mayor Larch Jones dedicated a few years ago, which my family and I attended, by the way. But I think that's all I need to say right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hutt, I just would like to make one clarification. As far as who shot, who fired the shot that killed Mackey Meriwether, that's never been determined. So that, that's unknown. And the monument in Carsville that was dedicated by Mayor Larch Jones and others actually honors all eight of the men who died in the Hamburg incident. So I just wanted to make just, just those minor clarifications to what you said. Is there anyone else who'd like to make? Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry. Didn't mean to point, but I can't, can't recognize you if I know you. I'm sorry.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Yazzy. I am a resident of Folkwood Court in North Augusta. I'm a homeowner. I'm a taxpayer. I'm an engineer at Savannah Riverside. I live. Many of you may hear some repetition from what I sent you all in emails, and I got responses back from most of you, but for those who I didn't hear back from, I'll go ahead and say it again. I live, I work, I play, I spend my taxes here in City Limits. As often as I can, I shop in the city of North Augusta. Too often, I have to drive to Aiken in order to protest on behalf of my black brothers and sisters. Too often, they are left to speak for themselves with no one of non-black descent to stand up with them, and that is why I'm here today. I should not have to drive thirty minutes to Aiken to express my First Amendment rights, and neither should they. I shouldn't have to go to another state to exercise my First Amendment rights, and neither should they. If that's the case, then we should start taking our money to Aiken, or we should start taking our money to Augusta, because maybe then they will have a voice. I ask you all to consider these remarks as you vote, and also ask you to consider them on the day of the protest, and know that you're welcome to join with us and stand with us and make a statement that is not merely performative. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm sorry, I didn't get your first, your last name. I'm sorry.
Stephanie Yazzy, Y-A-Z-Z-I-E.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir, in the blue shirt.
My name is Bill Aron, and I'm going to make mine short and sweet. The last time, about two years ago, y'all brought this subject up, you and the other gentleman was talking about it, and I don't know what his final decision was, but a lot of y'all's followers went up to the cemetery and knocked over a bunch of the Meriwether's tombstones. So I think you need to tell the people, you know, they got to respect the other ones just because he, whatever he done, then they don't need to go up there and destroy the other's, the other tombstones. That's all I have.
Thank you. Sir, I'm sorry. Your last name? Ryan? Okay, that's what I thought, I'm sorry. Anyone else? Ms. Jones, or are you going to accede to him for a minute? Come on, sir.
Thank you for coming today. My name is Bobby Thomas. I'm a resident homeowner of North Augusta.
Last name is?
Bobby Thomas.
T-H-O-M-A-S?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I hope to speak intelligently. I understand the issue that's confronting us today is a monument. Now, you'll forgive me for not being a historian, but I read the words on the monument. And I would like to take a minute to talk about Anglo-Saxon heritage and supremacy. Now, I personally am a person of mixed descent, and God knows how many different dissents there is. We know about some indigenous people and some Welsh people also. But as far as I've been able to, to learn, the Anglo-Saxon heritage happens to be a religious heritage. Now, when I read the religious text of the Anglo-Saxon people, in there I learned that one God created one man and one woman. And I think it's a mighty supreme idea that we're one family. Now, pardon me for the aside, that doesn't really have to do so much with the text. It goes on. Not only is this an amazing heritage, but I can understand, because listen, I've been a minority in so many different ways and so many different times and places. And I'm not trying to be cool with these glasses. I'm sorry, guys, I lost my cleares. And what I'm saying is that it's hard being the minority. It's a big difficulty. It's hard being the group that, as the young lady expressed so eloquently, feels like we're left out because you don't look like me, right? Clearly, none of you look like me. And what I'm saying is, I, I can, in some kind of ways, in my limited space, having been a minority, I understand what it's like to feel left out. I've heard a lot of talk about white privilege, and I want to claim some white privilege right now. I want to tell you, I've had the blessed opportunity to be raised and schooled and nurtured as a man by a lot of fine men who happen to be black or of African descent, however you might want to talk about it, okay? So the first point I want to make is that I think it's a supreme idea that man descends from one man and one woman and we're one family. And I understand all of the media shenanigans that's been going on and the kind of hatred that's been aroused between our fellow men. I live here. These people are my people. I don't know any black people that hate white people. I don't know any white people that hate black people. I don't. And I want to say that we need to make a divide. There's such a thing as evil, and there's such a thing as good. Now, what I would hate to see is for North Augusta to be split up over some nonsense media talk. Who are the people that live next to you? Who are they? Do you know them? Do they love you? Do you love them? So the first point I wanted to make was, I read the monument, and I think Mr. Hutt, he said he didn't find an objection. I don't either. I think it's a supreme idea that we descend from one man and one woman and we're one family. We're not hearing about this. My concern and reason when I come to speak is so we don't lose the grip on who we are as Carolinians, as North Augustans. We're a family here. Now, this stuff might belong in Los Angeles, and it might belong, you know, and look, far be it from me to forbid the First Amendment right, because I'm not the only guy here. I mean, if you read it and you really think it's about hatred, I'm with you. And as a matter of fact, I don't much like the symbol of the obelisk because I happen to be a Christian. It's a non-Christian symbol. So if you take it down, it doesn't affect me.
Excuse me, sir, would you address council, please?
Please pardon me, Mr. Mayor. I'm not a professional speaker. I've never been in this situation before. I came unprepared, as you can clearly see, but I needed to come. And I needed to say, if it's a matter of fact that Meriwether was not fighting in defense of African-Americans, or that is to say, Americans of African descent, then let's get rid of it. So what? If he wasn't fighting, and I don't know the history, and this is a point of clarity that I'd like to hear, and maybe the young lady can come and tell us more about it. We should raise up the majority that raises up to minority when injustice is being done. And maybe that's what's happened with this monument. I don't know. But if it's a matter of fact that that man was not fighting in defense of Americans of African descent, we don't need it. It means nothing to us. That's all I have to say. Please pardon me, no disrespect intended. Please forgive me.
That's fine.
I'm not formally trained in these...
Many of us aren't either, so it's okay. Thank you.
I can leave my name here, sir?
Certainly. If you'd like to fill out a piece of paper, yes, the white ones, and use one of the pens, and the pen is yours. Thank you for your comments. You were right on time, thank you. Nope, you made it perfectly. Anyone else? Yes, I'm sorry, Ms. Jones?
Good afternoon. My name is Elizabeth Jones, One Hammond Place Court, North Augusta. I just want to remind North Augustans that we are North Augustans and that we have to live here after all of this is over with as a community. I just want to remind everyone of that and that we want to have a peaceful demonstration, a peaceful demonstration, and follow the guidelines that public safety put in place for us to keep all of us safe. And to make it be a demonstration about social justice, because that's what we want. We want social justice for everyone in America, regardless of race, ethnicity. And I think we need to remember also as North Augustans, we talk about black and white a lot, but we are not the only people in North Augusta. We have Asian Americans, we have Native Americans, we have Latina Americans, so it's not always all about us. So we need to make sure that we are inclusive of everyone in North Augusta in everything that we decide to do. And everything that we decide to do needs to be inclusive, and we think about social justice for everyone in America and in North Augusta. Now, do we have that? Probably not totally. There are a lot of things that we can work on, but I do ask that we work on them peacefully and that we work on them respectfully and that we respect each other in our conversations with each other. And I hope that on Saturday, if the permit is approved, that when we go out to do the protests, that we are respectful to each other regardless of what we look like and how different we look from each other, that we're respectful. I'm not going to speak on the monument because I said about a year ago, after a lot of backlash on social media, that I was never going to speak on the monument again, and I'm a woman of my word, I'm done speaking on the monument. I have my private, you know, concerns about a lot of different things, but I'm done with monument. Thank you all so much for letting me speak.
Thank you very much, and actually, thank you for commenting on the, the issue at hand, the permit, so I appreciate that. Anyone else? Okay, hearing none. Counsel? You want to start, David, or us?
First of all, thank you for coming tonight and speaking from the heart. I've been somewhat of a person focusing to a greater rather than lesser extent on the Meriwether Monument, what it said... on, uh, the Merriweather Monument, uh, what it says, uh, and how to deal with that. And I've listened extensively, uh, to people of, of a variety of opinions on it. And, and I have mine. I, I don't, if, in September, I, I checked it again today, I think it was September of 2017, is when Mr. Makin made, uh, his presentation, uh, in this chamber at a council meeting. And I stated at that time, uh, I don't remember the exact words, but that I was appalled by what, uh, words were on the monument. I studied, uh, knew very li- excuse me, knew very little about Hamburg, knew very little about, uh, the Merriweather Monument. Have worked somewhat diligently in, in, uh, in the midst of my other mayoral duties. Uh, one, to prepare what I felt was a comprehensive, complete, uh, factual thesis or report on the Hamburg riot massacre incident, pick your, pick your choice. Presented it publicly, had a, uh, group of people working with me, providing me ideas and input. I listened extensively and to be quite honest, the night that I presented the report to counsel, sitting up in, in the, in the back, the group that I worked with, uh, sat together. And that was, uh, the telling point to me and, and where I've gotten in this issue and how to deal with it, as I've heard tonight, is you've got to know your neighbor. You've got to listen to your neighbor and understand their viewpoint. I, I, I've had a rather lengthy life and I've come to realize that it's difficult not to like somebody that you know well. It happens, but fundamentally, if you understand the individual and get to know them, that's a long way toward, uh, where, where we want to be. And, and that's what, uh, we're trying to do. Certainly, uh, have a group now that I'm working with to figure out what to do. You, you don't agree with it, I understand that you want the monument gone, I think it's an opportunity to provide a perspective and say that that's not what North Augusta is. It's not an original thought on my part, but sometimes if things get out of the public awareness, there's potentially a chance that it, that that thought recurs. If you can bring it there and, and point out that it's wrong and focus on that, that message, there's a chance that you can move forward and, and, and that's what, uh, that's what we're about. Certainly that's what I'm about and that's what I've been working hard and I think counsel would agree, uh, that we need to continue to work that hard. And, and I think it was telling to listen tonight that, uh, we're North Augustans. We're North Augustans today, we'll be North Augustan Saturday and we'll be North Augustan Sunday. We have a, we have a ways to go, everybody has a ways to go. We grow, we recognize what our past was, we learn from our mistakes. That's one of the, uh, keynotes, I think, of where we are as a people and individuals, is you learn from, from your mistakes, uh, so that you don't repeat them. So, uh, having said all that, it's a long ways from the march perhaps, but there's no question, uh, that I endorse the right of this group. One, to march, uh, two, and I look forward to the dialogue and listening and understanding, uh, their concerns, how, how their suggestions are and so that we can move forward and I think that that dialogue will be, uh, very, very beneficial. Thank you.
David?
Uh, yes, sir. Um, this evening was about, uh, we're, we're discussing the vote to be able to have the, the protests this weekend. My thoughts and opinion could go real deep and I could talk about this for hours and hours and hours. I don't know if I'm the only black man that's ever sat on council before, I may have been, may have been, I don't know. I didn't run on that ticket as being the only black man to be in council, but I, I've sat in this position throughout the community, uh, all my life and have dealt with, uh, the attitude and opinion from both sides of the story many, many times. And I'm gonna do my best not to tear up here this evening. This is something that I deal with every single day of my life, whether it's being ostracized by one group or another, being mistaken for your opinion or your thoughts or your attitude every day, every day. I work in a business that's a predominantly white business. Good old boy system business, this is probably not good for my business. So this issue is very, very tough for me to discuss with, to talk about. And people say, where do you come from? Why haven't you said anything? What do you do? I've heard stories all my life from my parents, my grandfathers, my uncles, my cousins, of how they marched with Martin Luther King in the sixties, many events. I was told a story of how my, my father was beat up on an incident in Aiken one time for being in the wrong place at the wrong time. I was told when I was younger, don't come to North Augusta and don't get caught there after night. So when it comes to this issue, it's a very passionate thing to me. Does that monument mean something to me? Absolutely, on both sides. But I live in a world, and I've been raised in a world that's extremely gray. But I know both sides very deeply. I've been cut to the bone many times. So to approve anybody to spend their time and, and protest is well within any, there's no way in the world. I would not vote for anybody to express their opinion, never. I don't care what they want to do. You can do it. When it comes to police brutality and challenges throughout the community and the country, there are problems. I don't believe we have that problem in North Augusta. I've spent time with our public safety officers. I know a lot of them. I don't believe we have that issue. And I, I have faith that Mr. Thomas, if he felt there was any issues like that, he would squash it in a minute. I have faith in that. I have faith in the leadership that we have here in North Augusta. Right or wrong, black or white, whatever, I have faith in it. So excuse me for maybe not voicing a, a stronger opinion about things sometimes. It's tough. It's real tough for me. But I could, like I said, I could talk about this forever. Anybody can call me, talk to me anytime, I'd be glad to talk to you. So I am all in favor of this this evening to approve, uh, the march on, on Saturday. I have an event and I'm scheduled to be out of town, I'm gonna try to rearrange it, but I'm all in favor for it.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Oh, I'm sorry.
You know, I, I'm gonna echo a lot of what some of y'all have already said. You know, this is a loving community. You know, there is, uh, many times where if one struggles, we all struggle, I feel like. I just want y'all to know, no matter where you're from, where you live, who you are, you know, I'll stand beside you. This is a community, I've grown up here, you know, I, I grew up in a, under, what you would probably consider an underserved area. You know, I know what it's like to be poor. You know, that doesn't matter now, but I do, I do not forget where I come from, okay? And all of you, whether, you know, I, you're my constituents, my neighbors, my friends, you know, no matter what, you know, I've always felt like if one hurts, we all hurt for different reasons. You know, like David kind of put, he's been there. I, I cannot sit here and act like I know Brandy or Ms. Jones or, or Ms. Mackey. I, I, I don't know any of, of what y'all may have dealt with, I, I really don't. But I do empathize with you and there is, uh, no way that I would not support this as well too. Thank you.
Who wants to be, anybody? Kevin?
Taking this off just because I can't hardly breathe and talk at the same time and, and in truth, I'm not real sure what I want to say, but I feel like I need to say something. One is of course I'll support this, I think it's your First Amendment right, whether I agree with you or don't. Um, but I do agree with you in a lot of ways and I've got a whole lot of sympathy, um, for what you're saying. And my hope is that this will start that conversation, Ms. Mackey, that has not been had, in a constructive, positive manner. You know, kind of, I, I, David, I can't add anything you said and certainly can't, can't speak to what you've spoken to because I've not experienced that. And you know, kind of as Eric said, I, I, I can, I can empathize, but I can't sympathize. But we do live in a good community and I believe that to the core of who I am and I believe that we live in a community that is mature enough and capable of having that conversation in a manner that it has. And I know that I've had some conversations with the mayor and some, some other folks and, you know, we're certainly open to having that conversation and, and going forward. It's, uh, probably not my most articulate moment right now, but I'm struggling with what to say and, and what to do in light of it. So the best I can tell you at this point is I'm listening, I'm open. Please reach out to me and feel safe in having that conversation. And that's, that's, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm learning and, and I think we all are and I think we're open, all open to that. So let's just, let's just make sure that we use this as an opportunity to move forward in a positive manner, um, you know. But regarding the issue at hand, um, you know, obviously I'm voting in favor of it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Hearing none, I thank, uh, thank you for your comments, counsel. You know, I've had discussions with, with all of you, each of you over the years and so I know where your heart is. And I appreciate that, so, um, having that, I want to call the question, all in favor of, uh, Resolution Number 2020 dash 23 to authorize the issuing of a permit to Brandy Mitchell for a marching protest on Georgia Avenue in demonstration at Calhoun Park on June 20th, 2020, please raise your hand if you're in favor. It's unanimous. Okay, counsel, thank you very much.
What time is it?
Five o'clock. From he, from adjacent to the municipal building here, maybe perhaps across the street by the carpet chopper in this area. Five o'clock, the assem- PM, yes. The assembly point is in this vicinity. Uh, I'm not exactly sure, I think you'd be able to tell, but it's five o'clock here marching to Calhoun Park. And Chief is, and his staff have prepared a, a plan to make sure that, uh, it's done safely. Uh, we, we will be, they will be marching on, on Georgia Avenue, which presents, uh, potential concerns, but we're going to be doing everything we can, uh, to make sure that, uh, they remain safe both in their transit up, up Georgia Avenue and then during their assembly in, in Calhoun Park, so. Okay, uh, we typically conclude with comments from citizens and I would, uh, hope that, that if you have something that you would be brief, I would try to keep it limited tonight to just this one issue, but, uh, Mr. Bryant, I think that you, I saw you indicate that you'd like to make a statement. Certainly.
Steven Bryant, 129 Butler Avenue. Couple weeks ago I was watching this study session regarding the fire station status and some things were brought up that I'd like to touch upon real quick. A consultant, Mark Chostner, brought up the timeframe for the current template design of five months. That was at the one hour forty-five minute mark. I'm not sure I understand why five months to put a set of plans together when this is a template building. Concern I have is we need this facility. Uh, the sooner the better, as, as I'm sure we all agree. The electrical, the mechanical, the plumbing, none of that's going to change with a template design. Your civil site design's going to change just for the nature of the, the business. And hopefully, possibly the facade to complement the historic district. The reason I'm, I came tonight, I had to, is because the time is of the essence. And he mentioned a budget of 3.8 million and stating that it would match current projections for the Augusta Fire Stations. He escalated the site costs since the site changed. Once again, I'm gonna have, I have to ask why. The concept plan that I submitted to the city for consideration and input, utilize the prototype layout for your three bay system, remove the detention pond component, remove the retaining, uh, retaining wall, probably a hundred thousand dollar retaining wall that was on the original plan, no conflict with those concrete power poles, which would have been probably a hundred sixty, two hundred thousand dollars to move that in a reduced pavement quantity. But let me be clear, I understand I'm not the engineer nor have received any information on this project other than what has been made public at council meetings. So I may not have all the information, but, but, but based on what I have seen and heard to date, it doesn't seem logical that the cost should be escalated in comparison to the Augusta Fire Station. Setting the budget based on the Fire Station require three bays is a prudent thing to do and I agree with that recommendation. It will hurt a little bit upfront, try to find that money, but in the long run, it'd be the correct decision and the citizens will ultimately be glad you made that decision. The city, uh, interim city administrator had mentioned we currently have 2.3 million, we're short one and a half roughly. Options we're reprioritizing CPS T123 or find funding from other projects. Several council members brought up concerns regarding the timeframe to start the construction. Fire station facility is a crucial facility that will protect a major portion of the city for the next 25 years and needs to be built as a three bay in order to meet all the public's safety needs and for them to do their job properly. Years ago when I was buying tractor in a building, a barn, several farmers advised me to build, buy the biggest tractor and build the biggest barn I could because in six months I would find out it wasn't big enough. And they were right. And the same applies here. Build the biggest fire station that you're gonna need for the next 25 years. The interim city administrator mentioned the city does not currently have adequate funding for the project and needs additional funds. Several council members spoke to this and that we should use those funds from other projects. Councilman Dickert specifically mentioned that this was too important of a project not to adjust the budget to get the station we needed. And in my opinion, that is the proper decision. We can't look back in five years, five years and wish we had built the three bay. I've lived in North Augusta for 21 years and have enjoyed this city, the conveniences the growth has provided and brought, but especially the safety of living here in the heart of North Augusta. What I'm about to say is in all seriousness and sincerity, and I have done this in the past, but it's usually only been for churches and nonprofits. But because this project is too important... is too important and pertains to the safety and well-being of all the citizens of North Augusta, I am willing to commit to you this day to offer my engineering services to the city and to the Public Safety Department to perform the civil design portion, including the DOT drawings and permits, for just the cost of the paper to print the plans for If I can do this civil engineering to help to expedite the timeframe and provide significant cost savings to public safety, they can then have the facility they need and then it would, and I would consider it an honor and a privilege to be able to give back to those in public safety, especially during this time in our country when our public safety personnel are not receiving the respect and appreciation they so deserve. I sincerely hope counsel will take my offer into consideration as intended to give public safety the best possible fire station for them to continue providing our growing city with quick response times and outstanding public safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Do you have a copy that you can send it? Okay, thank you, sir, because you made a number of points that I couldn't keep up with. Apologize. An opportunity to look at. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Counsel, any last thoughts? Hearing none.